So we can get this thing rolling.
Muted out, okay.
According to the state emergency plan, we're going to open with the flag salute. Please understand again that this is in no disrespect to anyone or the flag or any way. I'm going to do the flag salute. We're not doing a standing and Katie's going to show a picture of the flag. So there we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Katie, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Church.
Here.
Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Commissioner McLendon.
Here.
Chairman Mobley.
Here.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Here.
All right. All right. Looking for part two of this thing is approval of the minutes from the October 13th meeting.
I'll make the motion we approve as admitted.
I'll second it.
All right, Katie, can we start that again, please?
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
All right. Oral comments from the public that are not on the agenda tonight. Members of the public may be heard on any item of interest not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be allowed three minutes thereof. Be advised that by law, the commission cannot deliberate or take any action on issues that during oral comment. So Katie's going to put up a number for you. So anybody at home watching, please call that number or if you were on the ID with the zoom, there it is right there. You kick in and once you hit that star nine, it shows them that you're got your hand raised that you want to be talking to us. While that's going on, everybody having a good week so far? Remember if you're still.
I've seen that case before.
If you're not on mute.
They got eyes in it.
Sandy.
Uh, no, I'm not, but I will be.
All right, everybody still there?
I'm not seeing anybody call in. No hands raised, so.
All right, it looked like I saw Sandy left the meeting. Sandy, you still there?
Yes.
Here.
Okay, there we go. All right. All right.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we close public comment at this time.
I'll second that.
Good to see you.
Right. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Fortuna. Yes.
All right.
Well, isn't that isn't she one that owns?
Oh, Gina, yeah.
And then here's Paul.
Dennis, can we get you to mute your iPad, please?
All right. So business of the day, design review of Paul's Live from New York Business Sign and Illuminated Rooftop Sculpture. So this is at 101 12th Street here for two. So Katie, or sorry, can we get some background, please, from staff?
I had to fight this one back from Katie. She was so excited about the pizza that she wanted to give the presentation. I was afraid she was going to start crying, though. So I told her no. We did have that conversation, actually. So, yeah. Thank you, Chairman Mobley and Planning Commissioners. So this is our one agenda item tonight. But we've, yeah, no, we are happy to bring this to you. And I'm going to go ahead and share the PowerPoint slides. It shows the, um, the renderings for the sign. Katie, you need to enable my sharing, it looks like. Okay, so that's sharing, isn't it? Is that presenting on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, this is the building location. It's at the northeast corner of 12th Street and Newburgh. Um, and I think it was previously used as Tom Sardo Pizza. I think on the, on the Google Maps that the sign, the Tom Sardo sign is still there. It's been vacant for a while and we've seen the upgrades to the building that the applicant is making now with new paint and just, you know, making repairs and doing, you know, just making the building, bringing it back to, you know, presentable. It was kind of in a little bit of a disarray there. And there were, there's also going to be some landscaping on the site as well. Um, and I think some parking lot paving or not paving, but striping. And this is, this is the street view of the previous use. And it's kind of, it's, you know, this, the basic building shape is there, but it's, you know, it's got repairs. And to, you know, like here's a hole in the, I forget what is this, what is this feature called? This is the fascia up here. Um, and the building is painted and there's now there's office or not office storefront doors. And, um, and some new siding on the front and just, you know, overall improvements there. So this is the proposed sign and this is consistent with the other pizza restaurants that the applicant operates in McKinleyville and Arcata and Eureka. So it's basically, it's the Paul's Life from New York Pizza, you know, is this business name? And then the Statue of Liberty and then the New York skyline on both sides. So the area, you know, the sign, the lettering is um, front lit LED channel letters. So they'll, you know, they're individual lighted letters that are placed on the building, on the fascia. And those are 22 inches tall and 23 feet long. So, you know, maybe about half of the building. And then the two dimensional skyline cutouts on each side of the Statue of Liberty. And those will be frontlit channel illumination approximately, those are approximately four feet tall and for 14 feet long. And I believe that that style illuminates the, you know, some of the windows in the building. And I think the applicant can maybe clarify that or the, his sign consultant is, or contractors here as well. But that's what, that's how I understood the, the front lit channel illumination being that some of the windows will be illuminated. And then the three dimensionals fiberglass Statue of Liberty sculpture placed on the roof between those skyline cutouts. And that's, she is eight feet to the top of the torch. So I think the majority, you know, of her size is probably six feet, about six feet tall. And she will have minimal external lighting. And I believe that's from below like a projected light. The application called it a floodlight. And then for clarification, it's more similar to a landscaping light where it's like a low wattage, about 10, 10 watts. And it's projected like in a tube so that it can be focused on the Statue of Liberty and not projecting onto neighboring properties. So, and that's consistent with the, the city's sign policies, which are in the, adopted in the Fortuna general plan. And basically it prohibits projecting into the night sky. So if this is focused on the statue, it will, you know, that should comply with that. And not to project onto neighboring properties and then to be basically covered so that, you know, so that it can be focused onto its object rather than spread out like into the night sky or onto neighboring property. So that's been added as a condition of approval, just for clarification. And, you know, and we don't see any reason why that won't be complied with. And we appreciate that, working with the city on that. Um, the air sign area, calculated the maximum sign area for this new signage. And it does meet the city's sign code and the zoning code. And really they have a lot of sign area allowance because they're on a corner or they have a long street frontage. So the sign area allowance is based on the, the front, the square feet, the linear feet of the street frontage. So it's comparable, it's one to one for the square footage of the signage. You know, as a direct relation to the street frontage. Um, let's see, let me go through the slides. So this is the proposed building frontage. And then these are the letters, again, the LED channel letters. So each letter will be created and then you can see here the LED illumination from, I guess that's internal illumination of each letter. And then here is a rendering or an example of the Statue of Liberty. And then we just went, we got copies or images of the existing signs. I think this one is in Arcata on Sima Boulevard. And you can see, here is an example of the building. So, and you probably drove by it. It's been painted and so it's got the, I'm not sure, brick red on the fascia. And then the walls are this type of green. So it's basically the, the style for Paul's Life from New York. I'm consistent with his other stores, restaurants. And I kind of like how each sign is very similar, but also unique to each store. So, you know, there's a little bit of creativity there. So this one is a roof sign with the Statue of Liberty up front and the lettering and, and the skyline behind her. And this one is right on the walls with the Statue of Liberty standing more forward while the sign is on the walls behind her. I think this one is the Eureka Store and we didn't get one for McKinleyville, but I, I think there's a McKinleyville store too, right? Um, so, I mean, I think, you know, I think that's it, that's it. If you have any questions, let me know. But, um, yeah, it's just, this is design review of this proposed sign for Paul's Life from New York. And I'll turn that back to the planning commission.
All right. Anybody have any comments or, or questions for staff?
I, I have a quick question. I'm just curious because it's on a corner, why they're not considering putting, you know, Paul's Life from New York Pizza on the side of the building as well as on the front fascia? Because it is a, a cornered location and just seems to me to be obvious marketing opportunity.
Yeah. So let's, um, when, when the chairman opens it up for the applicant, let's save that question for the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff?
Liz, this is Gina McLendon. My question is two, two parts. It's, it all goes to the same, um, subject is, um, were the neighboring, um, the neighboring parcels? Because on the right hand side of that building, if you're looking at the building, that's residential, correct? And behind as well? Do they have to be notified of the sign that went up? And do we think that any of that light from that sign will affect the residence?
Um, yeah, no, thank you. That's, those are good questions. We did send out property notices. That's required for designer review. So the zoning code specifically calls out sending notices to the property owners within 300 feet of the, of the business. So that would probably be about three houses out. It may be even more on each side or on all sides of the building. And, um, we did get one comment and that's actually a letter in your packet. So we didn't get any other comments, no phone calls, um, no inquiries. But we did get the letter. It's in your packet. It's dated October 22nd from Cliff Andrew Clendenon. And they are calling out, you know, their concern about the brightness of the lights. And basically they support the project and they told me that personally, they support the project. But they did want, you know, some concern about the lights just being addressed. And so that's one reason why I added the 10 watt limit or approximately 10, 10 watts to the, like the sort of little floodlight on Statue of Liberty. And the other lights, um, I think that the sign consultant can answer the exact or, you know, close to the wattage. But, you know, there's no reason to think that this sign is going to be lighted any more than other commercial signs. You know, in, in any of the other residential districts. The, the business across the street, it is, you know, it's a commercial business. It's Clendenon's, um, apple, apple and, um, you know, food stand. The other couple of residences across the street kind of to the north, those are screened pretty well with pretty dense vegetation. So I'm not sure if, you know, even the normal lighting of the sign will affect them. And then I think this, the residences to the other side, like to the east and the north, and even this, and the south. Well, actually there aren't any residences to the south, but to the east and the north. But they shouldn't be affected by the sign lighting because it's not going to be directed in, in their direction. So I think we can get some more information or input from the sign consultant on the, the wattage of the, the lettering.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Isn't there a street light right at that corner? And wouldn't that be a little bit brighter based on the lumen versus the signings that we're looking at?
Yeah, there's actually two streetlights. We did look at that. There's one that kind of in front of Clendenon's and there's one on the other across the street, across Newburgh. You can see them on the aerials and we, we saw them out there. So, yeah, it's, it's a well lighted, you know, because it's an intersection with a lot going on there. It does have the two streetlights.
Yeah, so I think those streetlights would probably drawn out the lighting from this signage based on what the lumen are.
Okay. Let's, um, open it up to public comment. So again, Katie, will you flash that number for me, please? Anybody out there want to call in on this, talk about this subject, please? Call the number and let's hear from you. Katie, can you flash, are you flash? There it goes. So as we're waiting, um, you guys have been working, they've been working on that building for quite a long time. It looks like it's going to be, uh, hopefully up and running soon. To me, it looks like a good project and, uh, it'd look nice up there at something to town. Another place to, to go.
Is there a projected grand opening date?
I think he was saying somewhere right after the first. Katie, we having any luck? Anybody wanting to talk about this?
We have no comments.
I'm gonna make a motion that we close the public comment at this time.
I'll start it. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, my computer froze. I'm the applicant. Was there any questions for us?
Uh, not, not yet, quite yet. We're getting me there just.
I just had to reboot. Sorry about that.
So Katie, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Oh, you're muted, Gina.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
All right, so back to you guys. Kevin, you had a question for Jeff?
Well, yeah, I was just thinking it's a street corner. I was just wondering why there isn't going to be signings to the side.
Paul, you still there?
Yeah, here I am. Okay. I think there was a, there was a house that's, I, I don't know, we, we, I just thought about centralizing it on the building. We didn't, we didn't think about the side too much, but, um, didn't really think about it. I don't know.
Yeah, we just, the front of the building kind of presents itself where the sign goes. There is an existing sign pole there that me and Paul were talking about putting a big slice on or something in the future. So that addressed that. But there's really just not a good sign area on the side of the building. So we didn't, we really didn't discuss it much.
I was just thinking about if there's something coming from the future, if that's ever been thought. I was just trying to plant that seed.
Yeah, well, there's a really good pole on the corner because there used to be a pole sign there. So we can use that for something in the future. Then that would kind of get all directions.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments for him? Okay, back to, to you guys. Any more questions, comments that you want to bring up or talk about, about this? Got anything to say about it? Hearing none, looking for a motion. Uh, Kevin, you are muted again.
I said I'll make the motion to adopt resolution P 2020-3047. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna approving the design review. The Paul's Live from New York Business Sign and Rooftop Illuminated Sculpture.
I'll second.
Okay, Katie?
All right. Roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
All right, there you go. Congratulations, guys. Can't wait.
All right, very much.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to staff report. Anything going on, Liz?
Oh, we have so much going on. I was just going to ask if you guys have any questions.
I know. That's a way to get around it.
Well, I gave the full on report, the monthly report last time, so I don't want to like keep repeating and.
That's good. Anybody see a project or know about a project going on they want to talk to Liz about?
We have a lot, we have a lot going up right now. Smith Lane multifamily apartments are underway. And that's a, that was a subdivision that came to you about a year ago. And they are moving forward with the subdivision of those, I think it's 30, 30 lots, yeah, or 30 units. But they're also, they've also pulled the building permits for the building. So they won't be able to occupy them until that project is complete with regards to the subdivision. But you will see, if you go down Smith Lane, you will see that under construction. Same condition with the, um, the Fitzie subdivision on Redwood Way. So that one is under construction for the subdivision improvement plant improvements, the public improvements. They're also going ahead with starting construction of some of the dwelling units as well. So I know that the builders really want to be able to, you know, get going on their houses and get things, supplies and get construction staged and all of that. So what else is under construction in Fortuna? I know we're issuing a lot of billing permits and a lot of, we're carrying out subdivisions that have, you guys have approved. So now we're busy now doing all of the footwork. Katie just went to the recorder's office on, um, the Castanque subdivision on Rooneyville Road and First Street, that one. Kind of a small one, I may not remember it. It's got two single family dwellings that he split off. So that one was fairly simple. There were no public improvements to construct. But still carrying out the, the parcel map and, you know, doing all the paperwork for that and getting that, that recorded in a orderly manner. You know, it's just a lot of kind of interesting following subdivision map act regulations and working with the city surveyor, working with the applicant and the applicant's surveyor, creating the map and getting it reviewed and signed and, you know, complete so that the recorder can record it. What other activities? I mean, we're doing a couple of grants. We're carrying out the SB2 grant. I kind of, I told you about that one last time, so I won't go over each of the projects. But the stakeholders group met, gave some background kind of direction, not really direction, but just their opinions on development within the city. So, you know, now we're working on, on kind of creating a draft and scheduling a public workshop. And that's going to include the planning commission and the city council to kind of get your input on the direction for, um, the standards that will be created. That will be probably in November, maybe December, early December. So, yeah. I won't go into too much more unless you have any questions.
Anybody?
I'll just say you're doing a great job. We're grateful for all you do.
Oh, thanks. You guys are really great as well. Really appreciate all of you.
I agree, Liz.
Thanks, everybody. It is a lot, it, it's, uh, since I started, it's, it's a lot more funner that people, we all get involved.
Yeah.
Everybody's talking, everybody's throwing their comments and, and everybody's getting involved in that. And it's a lot, it's a lot nicer to do that when, when, uh, we hear from everybody. So thank you all. All right, looking for a motion to close.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. Katie, one more time, please.
There we go. Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Church.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner McLendon.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening, have a good week. Stay safe.
Hi, everybody.